Open the meeting. Motion for waiver of formalities.
Second.
Questions or comments? Number two is an announcement for public. Tonight, board met in executive session to discuss personnel litigation. Comments by members of the board?
Just relate to the board agenda, just want to say he's in the audience as well as Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chris.
Always appreciate alums coming back to coach our kids. Number four is items for board information and discussion. I'm sorry. Any comments by members of the board? 4.01 is a review of the annual audit. Christopher Hart. Everybody had a copy of the audit in front of you.
All right. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Herm, a partner with Meili L.L.P. We're the independent auditors for the year ended June 30, 2021. Very happy to be here with you tonight to present the audit results. I did, you should all have a six-page executive summary. I figured this would be a little easier than going through the whole 100-page report. I'll hit on the same highlights here. So just going through the summary, the first page, the results of the audit, the financial statement audit does express an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's also known as a clean opinion. It's what you want to have. It's the most positive opinion you can have on your financial statements. What that essentially means is that, in our opinion, the statements are free of any material misstatements. They're in compliance gap. That's generally accepted accounting principles. They comply with all GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board announcements. And there are those scope limitations. We come into the audit of very lengthy document request list to the business office, everything from bank statements, reconciliations, to every employee's W-2, to invoices and receipt transaction. We did receive everything that we needed to fully conduct our audit. The opinion did have one thing on it, emphasis of matter. It's not a bad thing. It's exactly what it sounds like. It's our ability to emphasize a matter to a reader. In this case, that's just stating that for this year, we implemented GASB Statement Number 84 for fiduciary activities. Not a big deal, mostly cosmetic. Has to do with the fiduciary funds, which are your student activity and scholarship funds. In the past, in the financial statement, we would always present just an asset and offsetting liability. The GASB changed the requirements for those activities. And in the fiduciary activities, we now show the cash being held by the school district for those activities. And then instead of a liability, it's a fundback. It's very similar to the way your general fund, your food service, your capital markets are presented. And then this year, the change is we actually show a revenue and expense statement for those as well. So mostly cosmetic and it only impacts those activities. No instances of noncompliance material in the financial statements and no findings related to the audit. If we did have any of those, those would have to be presented in the report or in a separate letter. We do not have those things. We do review internal controls as part of our audit. Really anything that impacts key financial data, receipts, disbursements, payroll, bank reconciliations, things of that nature, and had no issues as part of the audit. Uniform guidance audit, also known as a single audit or the audit of federal awards. Again, this is an unmodified opinion. No issues in regards to the internal controls over the program. We did have one sort of significant change here. The major program we audited this year was the child nutrition cluster. Historically, we've tended to audit the Title I or the Special Education Cluster Idea Fund. With the pandemic, what we've seen across all the schools is that the child nutrition cluster, the subsidies that the school district received increased dramatically because all of the children were fully covered by the program. So there was no paid lunch. It was all sort of subsidized. So your revenue went from $240,000 in the past, which was a relatively small amount, to almost $700,000 this year. So that was program. Hadn't seen a lot of audit activity in the past, but we did look at this year, again, looking at eligibility criteria, making sure those things are working, verification testing, reporting requirements, no issues in regards to the child nutrition cluster. The next few pages are just some highlights regarding some of the numbers in the financial statement. The next page covers some of the significant accounting estimates in the report. Capital assets, depreciation, accumulated depreciation, total cost of school district assets for the year just shy of $170 million. Cumulated depreciation on those about $60 million. What that tells me is you're about 35% of the way through the useful life of school district assets. That's pretty good. It's on the low end of the conversation that I've been having this year. I've had anywhere from 50, 60, 70. So to be at 35%, that shows me you still have a lot of life left in the assets. Net pension liability, this is your share of the PESR's, the state pension plan, plan, pie, so to speak, your slice. $89 million of liability last year to the school district, rose to $95 million this year. One thing I want to point out here is your share of the, I don't even know what it is these days, $40, $50 billion shortfall in the state pension plan. Your share is based on your contributions for the year. The reason that rose so much, even though this is a June 30, 21 financial statement for you, there's actually a one-year look back. So you're actually reporting June 30, 2021, PESR statement. And when we think about June 30, 2020, we were three months into the pandemic. We'd seen a lot of investment turmoil out there in the world. So unfortunately, the liability had a big jump because the value of the assets in the plan went down, run down in the pandemic. I would expect this number to sort of rebound next year. We should see a nice decrease in that liability for the June 30, 22 financial, when we're looking back at June 30, 21 for PESR's. The net OPEV liability, this is other post-employment benefits, compensated absence below that, both pretty flat, with probably about $7 million of OPEV and about $1.2 million of compensated absences, which is your employees' bank time. Next page, just a couple graphs covering revenues and expenditures. These are your governmental funds. These are the modified accrual basis of accounting. This is how you're typically used to see your numbers on a budget and, you know, monthly reporting basis. Local source revenue, that first column is the current year, orange column is the prior year. Current year local source revenue, 46.8 million. It's up about $600,000 from the year before. Really, three things play into the change in local source revenue. Real estate taxes up about $1.3 million this year, up to about $39.8 million. It's about a 3.2, 3.3% increase, and that put that aligns almost directly with the mileage increase that you had for the year. Unfortunately, while you had a $1.3 million increase in real estate taxes, your EIT revenues were down about $300,000 to about $3.5 million. Investment earnings also were down about $300,000. The year before, you had about roughly $340,000 of investment income. And again, the pandemic, unfortunately, we saw that go to about $30,000. So about a 90% drop in your investment revenues. Again, pretty typical for anybody, given the past year. State source revenue, 16, about 16.9 million of revenue this year versus 16.1 million last year. It's up about $800,000. Big thing there, your rental sinking fund, the subsidy that you received from the state was up about $1.2 million. It was offset a little bit by retirement subsidies from the state, down about $400,000. And then your federal source line was about $1 million last year, about $2 million this year, doubled, really related to the new ESER and COVID coronavirus funds that were starting to come into the schools. I'm expecting that number to probably double and increase dramatically over the next few years as well. Overall, revenues were up about $2.5 million in your governmental funds. The next graph, the expenditure composition. Expenses overall, 64.4 million this year, 68.1 last year. So we had a $2.5 million increase in revenues. We had a $3.7 million decrease in expenses. So both things kind of going the way we would want to see them. Instruction, virtually flat on the year before, about $34.5, $34.6 billion. So very flat with instruction expense. Support services down about $900,000, $20.4 million down to $19.5. That decrease solely driven by less transportation costs. Again, pandemic driven. Debt service, you had $9.3 million of expense in debt service last year, down to $6.1 million this year. So that's where most of your expense drop came from, other than the just shy of a million in transportation, $3.2 million decrease in debt service. Really, the reason for that, you had a 2012 bond the year before that you made a final payment on. You paid that off. The last principal payment on that was $3.1 million. So that was a $3.1 million debt payment you didn't have this year. The next page, long-term debt there at the top, $89.9 million last year, down to just a little over $89 million this year, about $800,000 decrease. You did have a $3 million of principal payments this year on the other bonds. So that was a $3 million decrease. However, you did take out a new bond this year, 2020 bond for $17.3 million, which refunded $15 million from the 2013 A series. So you took out $17 million of debt principal to pay off $15 million, which doesn't initially sound like a great deal, but when you figure in the interest that you save, like calculations or future cash flow savings, about $3 million by doing that refund, taking advantage of low interest rates. The chart at the bottom there, fund balance, again, this is modified accrual basis accounting for your governmental funds. This is the way you typically see the numbers. This does not include long-term assets, long-term liabilities, debt, additional liability, things of that nature. So just looking at the funds, that first line, the blue line, that's your general fund. So two years ago, you ended fund balance $13.8 million. You ran a little bit of a deficit into the June 30, 2020 year-end. Fund balance went down to about $12 million. Fund balance is the difference between assets and liabilities. It's what you would have left over to get paid off all your bills, so to speak. And as I mentioned earlier, your revenues were up, your expenses were down, so we see that blue line come up. You ended up with about just shy of $16 million in fund balance at the end of the year. So rebounded a bit from that deficit the year before and, you know, with some of the pandemic impact, have a little bounce back to the lower expenses and higher revenues. The orange row there, that's your other governmental, most of the capital projects, funds. It was about $6.6 million for the June 30, 19 year-end, jumped up to $15 million. The reason for that, we should took out a bond, the 2019 bond for about $10.7 million for capital projects. And then as we see that money starting to be sent, we see that line come back down to about $12.7 of fund balance at the end of this year. And then food service is that bottom line, and it's hovering right around negative $100,000 in your food service fund. Next page, this is net position, very similar to fund balance in that this represents assets less than any liabilities. But this includes long-term assets and liabilities. So this actually includes your capital assets, but then reduces for net pension liability, OPEV, things of that nature. You can see you're hovering right around negative $41 million. So you're in the red, negative $41 million, but every school district is when you figure in, you know, $90 million pension liabilities that you're getting from the state that, you know, not necessarily a real liability of the school district. Just what you have to report as your share. The last page, this is something I like to show the boards, just so they kind of see some of the things that we're doing as the audit firm in the background. You know, when it comes to the audit process, assets, liabilities are relatively easy to audit. Bank statements, we get payable listings. We can look at money coming in subsequent to year-end for receivables. Revenue is also very easy to audit. We can confirm a lot of that. PDE confirms a lot of grant money you receive. Expenses tends to be one of the areas that audit firms have the most difficulty getting their hands around, just because there is so much activity in so many different accounts. So one of the things that we like to do is show some of the things that we're doing to audit your expenses. One of the things we do is Benford's Law test, which is what this first graph is. Benford's Law is a mathematical law. You can apply it to any randomly occurring population of numbers. I've seen it applied to Major League Baseball batting averages. It works in pretty much anything. And what it says, in any large randomly occurring population of numbers, the first digit will be one about 30% of the time, it'll be two about 22% of the time, three about 17%, and it just drops off. This graph is also about 30, 40,000 transactions of the school district for the June 30 year. You can see that your activity falls right in that curve. So whether it starts with $1, $10, $100, $1,000, whatever it would be, everything falls into that graph. We also will do the first two digits. So the first two digits, 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, all the way to 99, that's where we'll tend to start seeing some spikes. The graph will start having some red columns and orange columns, and those are things that we'll look at from an audit perspective. Most often, it's recurring payroll activity, you know, things that are happening 24, 26 times a year for virtually the same amount. Some other things that we do there at the bottom, we do pivot table analysis. We'll take all of your data, load it into our data extraction and analysis tool, and analyze all, you know, 40,000 transactions, looking for any unusual spikes or valleys in activity throughout the year. And if we see anything unusual, that's where we'll focus our audit testing. Because we've been your auditor for a number of years, we can also do that at a multi-level year or a multi-year level. So if you see a spike in an activity in April, we can look at last year and see if we had the same, you know, spike or valley in activity. If we did, we can usually, you know, chalk that up to, you know, just timing. And if it didn't, yeah, that's something that we can look at. Predictive analytics is something we started doing a couple of years ago, looking at a history of data for the school district, looking at activity over the last four or five years, coming up with the projection of what we think this year's expenses should be, praying that the actual results, then again, if our projection doesn't match what actually happened, that's what we'll test as part of our expenses. We look at all your W-2s, looking for any unusual changes in employee pay. We do journal entry testing. We look at vendors, you know, in the GL, we look for people who get payments. So these are all things we do. And the idea is because expenses is such a big part of the school district, there's so many transactions, this allows us, you know, this allows us to have a risk-based approach, rather than just coming in, looking at the same expense accounts every year or the same standards every year. So yeah, just something we like to show, because expenses do tend to be one of the areas that are, there's a lot of volume there. That's all I've got. I'd be happy to field any questions if there are any.
Thank you, much. Nice to see the results of our bond, refunding and saving. Good news. Thank you. Chris, thanks for the summary for the board. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you. Have a night. The important agenda is items for board information. That was 4.01. 4.02, discussion on policy, define or appropriate display of content. We are in the process of forming a subcommittee to address anything displayed in the classroom that is inappropriate. 4.03 is the PSBA required training.
Thank you, Mr. Hermer. It's just a item that is being brought to the attention of, we'd like to bring to the attention of the board. PSBA pointed out that new board member training will be held January 8. Board members didn't have the opportunity to participate in the past. That'll be held on Saturday, January 8 from 9:00 to 3:15 at Harvard for middle school. And board members who might like advanced training are also eligible to participate Saturday, January 8 from 11:00 to 3:15 at Harvard for middle school. Any board members that would like to participate in that training, just let myself know, and we'll get you registered for that. I also had the representatives of the PSBA reach out to me with respect to content-specific training, school board, if they're still willing to do that by Zoom or in person on any topics, whether it has to do with budget development, diversity, equity, and inclusion work, equity audits, work around supervision of administrators, compensation studies. PSBA is willing to come out and do that training for the board. I'll pass along those topics for the board and let us know as well. And if there's interest, we'll set that up. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hermer.
Comments by members of the public? All the agenda items? Is this an agenda item?
Oh, not on the agenda.
Agenda item.
Hi, Amanda Scott, 413 Higgro of Lehman Astin. Back to the agenda item on the committee. Can you clarify scope, who'll participate?
We haven't put together yet, but yeah.
What's the topic?
Exactly what it says on our agenda tonight. Posters, flyers, bulletin boards, et cetera, both posted in our classrooms by anyone that feels inappropriate. We can't, we can't address something to put on a board, a policy form.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to start, item six on page two, go to page three, four, end of page five, references pinned up with budget 2021, 2022, Act 93 Plan, PDA agreement, PDASPA agreement, PDSSPA agreement, PA School Code Section 1101P, is administrative recommendation of pool of personnel in the status presented by this motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.03 is a bus buyback, bid award. Motion to award, approve the bus buyback to rural bus sales of Pennsylvanians as presented. Lowest responsible bidder in accordance with all bid specifications, we see November 30th point on this motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.04 is a bid award for the Aston Elementary School Chiller Replacement. Motion is to award the Aston Elementary School of Chiller Replacement bid to GEM Mechanical Services of Aston for a base bid of $339,000 and reject alternate bid one for an amount not to exceed $339,000 in accordance with bid specifications, subject to solicitor's review and execution of the mutually agreeable contract. By this motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.05, accept local audit. Motion is to accept the local audit completed by L.L.P. of Oaksp A in 2020, 2021 school year. As per this motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6.06 is a residency disqualification, disenrollment. Motion is to approve the administrative action to disenroll the following students pinned up with school there for defective. End of day, end of school day, December 9, 2021. Student 43295 and 43995. Go ahead, this motion.
So for, Mr. President, excuse me, so for these disqualifications, they were on last month's agenda, but we, there's some technicalities that we do need to hit, because on those disenrollment matters, if my recollection serves me correctly, you consisted of the panel.
That is correct.
And then in order to move forward on each one independently, each board member here would indicate that whether they were present, which they were not, because you were the only individual there. But there was a transcript made of that hearing and then presented to the board members. So in order to participate in this vote, it should be a roll call vote for each student individually, and then each board member other than yourself should indicate that they reviewed the transcript as they move forward, and then what their vote is on the motion to disenroll. So a motion to disenroll for each student should be what takes place, and then the query as to whether or not each board member reviewed the transcript, and then what their vote is.
So the motion is for to disenroll student 43295. Mr. Dobb.
Mrs. Ellis, did you review the transcript?
Yes.
And your vote is yes. Mrs. Essler, did you review the transcript? And your vote, yes. Mrs. Powell, did you review the transcript?
Yes.
And your vote is?
Yes.
Mr. Cisak, did you review the transcript?
Yes.
And your vote is?
Yes.
Mr. Tinsley, did you review the transcript?
Yes.
And your vote is?
Yes.
Mr. Hermer, did you review the transcript?
I was there. He was present. My vote is yes. All right. Motion passes for student 43295. Next is a motion for student 43915.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Essler?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Cisak?
Yes, and yes.
Mr. Tinsley?
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Hermer?
I was present, and yes. Thank you. Motion for student 43915, yes. Comments by members of the public?
Hello, again. I'm Sufi Shaper, Kirby Lane in Aston. I sent an email to the board today. I don't expect that the board would have had time to read it, so I brought everyone a copy of what I wanted to comment on, and you can just pass those along. So my comment is to urge the board to pass a resolution in support of the PA funding, school funding litigation that's currently on trial in Harrisburg. The lawsuit is based on a clause in our state constitution that says, "The General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance and support of a thorough and efficient system of public education to serve the needs of the Commonwealth." This puts it, makes public education responsibility of the General Assembly, the governor, the State Board of Education, and it is incumbent on them to provide this education regardless of the income level or property values of the community. And so what this, further, actually, further, in 2008, the state legislature wrote into law a benchmark calculating the funding required for adequate education. But they have not funded schools in this way. So that has left the state short of funding by $4.6 billion, according to the calculation that they wrote into law. That also, according to this calculation, would provide Pendelco School District an additional $9.4 million, $9,419,640 per year. So I just think, you know, what would that mean to our district? That would mean so many things that I know the administration would like to provide, additional nurses, counselors, librarians, reading specialists, extra help for students who are struggling to learn, especially over this last two years, so many people, their learning has been interrupted, and they need, we need additional support for these students. So my, what I'm asking is for the board to consider this draft, this draft resolution, which basically says you support the state equitably funding all of the districts, and that would take the burden, the tax burden off the residential property taxes for each district, and specifically in Pendelco. And if you remember, I believe Dr. Steinhaus said the increase in taxes this year was borne exclusively by our residential property taxes, $500,000 additional revenue from raising taxes on our property, our residential properties. So I urge you to support drafted- So I urge you to support, draft a resolution, either this one or draft one for yourselves, in support of this funding change in our, to let the legislature know that the state should be funding more equitably. That's it.
Got caught.
Hello, my name is Melissa Labrie. I live at 101 Greenbrier Place in Aston. I have two children who attend Aston Elementary School. Being a parent of young children during a pandemic is difficult. My natural inclination is to look at any situation's effect on well being. Well being is not just an absence of illness or dysfunction, it is thriving, being the best versions of ourselves. When we approach life from this positionality, we focus on many aspects of wellness, like physical strength, spiritual contentment, emotional health, and economic achievement. If we are sparse with honoring our whole selves, we limit our opportunities to achieve well being. We have experienced this time of great distress and uncertainty together. Many families in our community have faced difficult times pre pandemic. For example, the most recent data from the future ready P A index from the Department of Education's E S S A report card is from 2017 and 18. According to this report card, 30% of children who attend Pendelco schools are considered to be economically disadvantaged, with specific school populations ranging anywhere from 20% to 40%. What does that mean? It means that on average, one in three students in our district face barriers to resources, which can include food, shelter, clothing, books, internet, participating in athletics, having access to reliable vehicles, having a computer in the home. I wonder how this diminishes the well being of our students and their abilities to concentrate and participate in achieving academically. I also wonder how the pandemic has altered this data, as it has certainly affected the lives of our children. As we move into 2022, we must begin to think about how we can design our schools to address the needs of this community's children and families. How do we measure success of our students and our district? How will we meet the challenge and grow from the perspectives that we gained in 2020 and 21? We now know that we can change, adapt, and provide. We know that we are malleable, and we have agency to change the narrative for so many of our students to bring opportunities to succeed closer to them. Today, I would like to know how Pendelco plans to cultivate opportunities for well being for all students and especially for those who face barriers to their potential successes. What concrete actions can this board take to decide that socioeconomic status will not determine a child's experiences while attending our public schools? Ideally, this work would take the shape of a committee who identifies barriers to success and forms ideas on removing those barriers. Board members have already identified other issues of concern such as bullying or student enrollment in charter, cyber charter programs. After committing to this type of exploratory work, we may realize how better understanding students we teach leads us to being whole ourselves. We are not just in the business of teaching a poor academic curriculum, we are in the profession of teaching children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come up, members of the board?
Congrats, you guys.
And Chris, welcome. Congrats. I know the boys aren't really excited to have them back, and I'm sure Kevin can attest to that, especially the one player sitting in front of you.
Future meeting?
Stuff is fine, huh? You saw my favorite, my favorite topic on here are the retirees. Do we get to celebrate them this year?
Sure, I mean, we're open. It's nice to have in person recognitions again, and I would anticipate that hopefully we can have a full house. The people will be able to bring back some of the folks who are retiring. I noticed when you said even library assistant at the middle school would have been fantastic. And the least we can do is to recognize the work in the district. So I completely intend to put together an invitation, have our retirees come out and have the administrators that they work for say a few words on their behalf.
That's great. I'd love to see that happen this year.
I'd like to. Let me bring back my issue.
Yeah, I think we invite, everybody hasn't had the chance to, if we recognize it, we invite them. They feel comfortable, even if they want to go on tour, it's gonna be.
Totally. Yep.
Get them to grab the recognition that they deserve. So I congratulate everybody.
We'll recognize the retirees. We'll schedule that agenda, we, with the May meeting.
Okay.
I know sometimes that you want to get the oldest people at vacation homes or whatever.
Right.
But the May meeting tends to be a better meeting for retirees. So we'll look at that and set that up, have that ready to go.
Very nice holidays, nice B X T incentives. I know it's only for police practice, maybe even again, but maybe you'd have to decorate this room last year. And then also from like the holiday, you were including as well as Dr. Kimicka as far as for the Alice concert. I don't know if I ever, never been to, we could see the tears come out of my eyes with the basketball. Michelle called me. I'm sure everybody wants to have that.
So future meetings are January 19th, the study session here, and January 26th. Those are both in September. Motion for German?